October eighth, two thousand twenty-four Board of Supervisors meeting. Let the record show that five of the six supervisors are present. Mr. Clayton Forehand will not, from the Madison District, will not be able to make it tonight. So to my far left is Mr. Reggie Underwood from the Reedy Church District. To his right is Mr. Jeff Sealy from the Bowling Green District. To his right is Vice Chairwoman Nancy Long from the Port Royal District. And to my right is Mr. Floyd Thomas from the Mattapani District. And I'm Jeff Black from the Western Caroline District. If everyone could please rise for an invocation given by Mr. Thomas.
Let us pray. Dear Father God, we come before you to say, first of all, thank you for this day. Thank you for the many blessings you've given us. Thank you for the grace you provided us. We ask now that you would give us your wisdom, your guidance, to do what's right for the citizens of Caroline, to help make this a better place for all to live. In the name of Jesus the Christ, I pray, amen.
Please join us in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, opening board comments, I will start with Mr. Underwood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a couple of comments. First comment, Mr. Chairman, at our last meeting, there was constant bickering from the audience, and I'd asked that you take control of that to ensure that our meetings are conducted the way they should be. It's, I think it's within your purview, and that's what you should do. We give the citizens an opportunity to speak, and they can speak as they choose, but that's up to them. There is clearly some things that people don't agree with, they have a right to disagree, but there is a way to disagree. And I would ask that those rules be adhered to. Secondly, we allow the citizens to speak, and I think that's, that's what we're here to do, to hear from our citizens. And we want to make sure that citizens get an opportunity to voice their concerns. So I'm hoping that citizens will continue to voice their concerns and let their views be known to the, to the public, particularly to this board, how they feel about certain issues. There's no saying that if you lay down with dog, you get fleas, and sometimes we let people get away with things because we have, have an agenda. And I think we need to make sure our agenda is about Caroline County and not about individuals. And my final comment is, the state fair was last week. That five days of heavy rain, but I spoke to Ms. Jolliffe. It was a very solid fair Saturday was, I'm sure we got one complaint that I was aware the traffic was, was a bear on Saturday because the weather was so nice, I was over there, it was just really a great event. And she told me that they may very well eclipse the number that they had even last year for this year. So if they do that, that'll be over two hundred and twenty-five thousand people who will have attended the state fair this year, who got an opportunity to come to Caroline. And I did speak to some of the people when I was there with my grandkids, and people were from all over the state, and they were absolutely elated with the state fair. I think they've done a great job, and my hat is off to Ms. Jolliffe and Farm Bureau for the great job they did. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sealy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also attended the state fair a couple of days, and I was there the last Saturday, and I think they probably had record attendance, but it was impressive at the number of cars that were there. First, I'd like to start with Harvest Festival is the nineteenth of October in Bowling Green, inviting everyone to put it on their calendar and come join us. It's the longest running festival in the town. We also have Safe Trick or Treat in Bowling Green, and there's a map online for all the houses that participate. And it is something to see, the number of folks that participate. The map tells you where the houses are and who's participating, and they do as, as safe as possible with bags for the candy. So we're still sort of in the, the COVID mind, I guess, but it is something to see all the Bowling Greens swell up with kids everywhere. We also have Veterans Day, and Pastor Buford is the keynote speaker from Shiloh Baptist Church. It's on the courthouse lawn, November eleventh at eleven AM. And if it's raining, it will be in Town Hall. And those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mrs. Long?
Yes, I also have a few more than I usually do, actually. But I attended the fair on Wednesday, and as Mr. Underwood said, it was a nice event. And personally, I prefer having a little rain than a hundred and ten degrees in the sun, which it has been sometimes, it felt like, so it was a nice day. As Mr. Sealy said, yeah, with the end of, of the fair, we enter our Harvest Festival season. So our neighbors in King George are on the twelfth, Bowling Green is on the nineteenth, and then we have the Frog Level Event on the twenty-sixth, so all those things can go on your calendar and come and spend some time in local communities. And then on Sunday, I was able to attend a function in honor of Ms. Sally Chute Baker, where Bobby Ork read and presented to the family a plaque from the House of Delegates, recognizing all of Ms. Baker's contributions to her community, from the schoolhouse to the church, and all the people whose lives that she affected during hers. And it was a beautiful day, and she deserved every moment of that sunshine. And there was a lot of laughter and a few tears, and it was a great event. On the sixteenth of this month, I will be attending the Friends of the Rappahannock River Forum. So I will be there that day. I want to remind everybody that Sheriff Moser has a fundraiser coming up. If you're a golfer, it's the COPS for Kids Christmas event. So if you are a golfer, contact the sheriff and get all the information and support our kids. And then the last thing is, and this is also for staff, there's a regional housing summit on October the twenty-fourth at the Expo Center in Fredericksburg. It is a ticketed event, so and it's, it runs from nine to three, and I, I cannot attend, but I hope we can find someone from the county, either on the board or in staff, to attend that, that session. And that is the end of my comments, thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At our last meeting, this is kind of follow-up to what Mr. Underwood said, but at, at our last meeting, a citizen said they were disrespected by the board, and we also received an email and said basically the same thing, and pretty much pointed at us for not allowing someone to yell out from the audience. And, and that is obviously against the board's rules. I think we have expressed that time and time again. So someone saying you can't yell out during the board discussion is not disrespectful. And again, the chairman or any board member can ask for that person to be removed if it continues. So we welcome citizen comment. We welcome citizen discussion. Feel free to contact us, but there are certain rules and decorum that, that must be enforced during the board meetings. The other comment I have is the trailer park at the Bowling Green Convenience Site. Mr. Sealy and I discussed that during our, our break before we started. We're both in agreement that in, after forcing the residents who had been there for many, many years to move out within ten days' notice, the owners of that property are now violating the county's property maintenance code. So I'm going to insist that staff give them the shortest possible time to correct it, and that staff find the most expensive person to prepare and build those owners unless they take care of it. Those are my comments, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Just, I have a, just a few. The, I had an opportunity a couple of weeks ago to attend the two-hundred-and-fortieth anniversary of the Caroline Baptist Church. I learned a lot, very, very interesting. They had several of the pastors that were in attendance and gave, gave a little history, and it was very, very interesting to kind of get different perspectives. So I want to thank them, and we have a resolution in the board packet in regards to their two-hundred-and-fortieth anniversary. Goes back to, I mean, just after we had won our independence from Great Britain, so if you think about it, that's kind of pre-constitution when they were founded, which is crazy to think about. Second thing is thoughts and prayers to everyone in the path. So of, I'm sure a lot of us have friends or family that live in Florida right now. So please kind of keep them in your, in your thoughts and prayers as the hurricane is heading their way. Finally, the, at the meeting, I understand at the last meeting, people are very passionate in their beliefs, and there is a, definitely a decorum that is expected from the audience. You were given three minutes, and a lot of times, as the chair, I will extend it for a little bit. But we cannot have yelling from the audience, that's not, that's not what we're supposed to do. However, if there are board members here that think that I was not doing my due diligence, they, they know my phone number. We can, we can talk about it rather than bring it up in opening board comments. There's, I can promise that there is no hidden agenda, and I'm trying to be as fair as possible to the audience and the, and the board members. All right, with that, I will move on to the amendments to the agenda. Do we have any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve the agenda as written.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our, our first, our first order of business tonight is presentations and reports. We have the Teach and Thrive Housing Initiative, Dr. Calverick. And Mr. Tickle. And is it Dutcher? Dutcher, okay.
Good evening, Chair, Black, Vice Chair Long, and members of the board. I am Sarah Calverick, the proud superintendent of Caroline County Public Schools. Tonight before you is a terrific trio consisting of Jason Tickle, President of Caroline Habitat for Humanity, and Erica Dutcher, Program Relations for Central Virginia Housing, and thirdly, CCPS. I hope that what you see is the power of partnership. What you hear is a reflection of the Board of Supervisors' initial and continuing investment in Habitat for Humanity, and what you feel, once fully informed, is excitement for what is to come for our Caroline community and specifically our CCPS educators. With that, I will yield the podium to colleagues Erica and Jason. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all for your time tonight. I'm just going to walk us through our program, some history and why we came together and what our solution is at the table. So the challenge that we're going to see right now, and I'm sure I'm not bringing news to anyone at the table, that Caroline County is struggling to retain quality educators as well as quality first responders, as well as attract new talent. And an aspect of that challenge is the lack of affordable housing options within the county. This creates difficulty in securing housing that aligns with the salaries, especially of those in their first year. And increased commute times creates reduced job satisfaction. I also like to bring up that where you live is where you spend your money. So when our educators and first responders are living outside of the area, they are not spending their money in Caroline County. This affects the quality of education for our students, this affects the quality of care, and this creates barriers to the recruitment and retention of skilled staff. The partners at the table are Central Virginia Housing. We are a thirty-five-year-old nonprofit who serves the Planning District sixteen. We have sixty-five properties at this time that we manage. We do HUD counseling, and we administrate the Housing Choice voucher program, also known as the Section Eight program. At this time, we have sixty-five properties, and we are acquiring the Project Faith Angelwood properties. So we have currently an additional twelve in the Caroline area, but over the next year, it's going to be an additional one hundred and twelve units that we're going to be able to provide to this community. Obviously, Caroline County Habitat for Humanity is our second partner at the table, and they're going to bring the home ownership aspect to this solution. They've been serving this area since nineteen ninety-seven, and they believe decent shelter is a matter of conscience and action. And of course, Caroline County Public Schools, who are providing the teachers for this program and who understand that participating in this partnership is going to create an environment where we can recruit and retain quality educators. The proposal is that teachers will start with renting from Central Virginia Housing. Our highest rent is a thousand and four dollars. So it is absolutely affordable for our teachers in the salaries that they're seeing. They're going to be able to rent from us for two years, and then at the end of that two years, they're going to have the rental history and salary history needed to participate in the Habitat program. Caroline County Habitat has three different programs that teachers and first responders can participate with, and it depends on their household, what's the right fit for them. The three programs are as follows. Program one is the True Habitat for Humanity model. It is approximately a twelve-month process. It requires twenty-four to thirty hours working with five to eight other self-help homebuyers working on the Habitat home. It's very much a cohort style. The construction is conducted by those participating in the program, and the sweat equity equates to about twenty to thirty-six percent, depending on the household. The second program is a pilot program that is geared towards staff in the community. This is more attainable for this community because we're looking at twelve hours of self-help instead of the twenty-four to thirty-six per hour. This is also a shorter process, it is only ninety to one hundred and twenty days. And the construction is also conducted by a for-profit contractor, so you're not losing on quality on the home. Equity will vary dependent on the household, but the monthly mortgage bill is not going to be above thirty percent of their income, which is the definition of affordable housing. Lastly, there is Program Three, which is Habitat Services without the need for any self-help construction. And the timeline completely varies on the household and what style of home that they are looking at. There's no time spent assisting with construction. The construction is conducted by a for-profit contractor, and essentially what they are receiving is loan packaging services from Habitat, who is an expert in the loan packages that they can offer. So looking at the three, there's a big difference in equity, length of time of process, and the amount of hours that have to go in, which means that this program can be tailored to the individual. This is the process, and what you'd like to see, what we like to point out is that when people are moving out of the rentals into their home, those rentals are going to be able to be made available to the teachers and first responders again. So we're going to have this constant turnover of available affordable housing for these, for these staff members. Any questions for me?
The board have any questions? Mr. Underwood?
Yeah, just clarification.
Please.
Of the three programs, well, the cost of ownership is dependent on, I'm not talking about the rental, I understand. The cost of ownership can vary based on the level of sweat equity put into the properties that, am I?
That'll be a Jason question.
That is correct. You know, we've definitely, you know, have discovered that one path isn't right for everybody. So self-help, usually they get a lot more equity because they put a lot more work into it. The other two methods, we get down payment assistance grants to help them buy down so they can get some equity, but they don't have to put in as much sweat equity. So the self-help obviously is how we can help the lowest income in the area. So if you have, you know, the time and the effort in, in that, that is certainly, you're going to move in with a lot more equity than opposed to, it's kind of like the first method, most equity, second method, second most. And then third, they could even go and you, buy a home that's already on the market. They would just, we'd get them a loan, they'd work with a real estate agent and buy something that's already constructed, or work with one of the builders. So in that case, it's more like a traditional purchase. However, because of the loans, they get a subsidized interest rate longer term. It makes it more attainable, where they couldn't do that with a, a commercial loan from, from, you know, one of the big lenders out there.
Average cost per unit?
So the, the second and the third are pretty much market rate minus down payment assistance. For example, the governor has in the budget this year forty-five thousand dollars per home. So that's pretty much what makes it attainable for that group. So they'll move in with that. Now, they do have to own it for ten years before that whole forty-five is released. But our self-help, they're coming at about two fifty to three hundred, depending on the size of the home and the models that they pick. But the beauty of all of them is the payment is never more than thirty percent of the household income. But one big difference, self-help, we can build for a household that makes as low as thirty-two thousand. Those other methods, Method Two, you're going to be more like forty thousand. Method Three, you're going to be more like fifty thousand, up to seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars.
So you're saying that the, the lowest income that a person would be able to, the lowest income that a person would qualify would be thirty-five thousand?
About thirty-two, and, and that's for the self-help method. So it, it is how we can help the lowest income in there, so.
And, and that design is usually two-bedroom, three-bedroom?
Uh, three-bedroom, two-bath. In fact, the homes that we just completed in Bowling Green, that, that one on, on Brodus is literally our prototype for that particular model. It's really hard for us to build four bedrooms, we can do it, but our, you know, our, our key thing is that three-bedroom, two-bath home. And we actually just got a, a video tour of that, will be posted online soon. But I know many of you guys saw it, it is really a top-notch quality house, and that's what you can get through the self-help method.
Thank you, Mr. Tickle.
Mr. Sealy?
The most often question I get is, are any programs that help people that need to do home repairs, roofs, porches, you know, window replacement, that kind of stuff? Are there any programs that do that? Because that's frequently the question I'm asked.
I'm so glad you asked that. As I shared with many folks in the community, I can make that happen, but I have to have the money to pay somebody's salary for one year because I have to essentially have twenty projects that I have budget estimates, cost estimates for. And then I go to the USDA, and they have numerous programs that after I get started, just like my self-help program, it funds itself continuously. So we're working on that, and if the county ever wanted to invest in that, we could definitely make it happen.
Mrs. Long?
No, I have no questions. I think it sounds like a great program, and I know it's in good hands with, with you at the helm there. So I think it's wonderful.
Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, sir. I had some questions, but Jason, on the last one, you said if the county wanted to invest in, I guess, refurbishment or fixing, what, what's an investment to you?
So, you know, I got to have quality staff. And so, you know, if, if you're in the construction industry, we start at least fifty-two grand a year, plus what I got to pay for workers' comp and things like that. So it costs me about seventy thousand a year for an employee in that particular thing. So they got to have the ability to do budget scope, cost estimates, and visit the homes, work them all up, and then, and I'm estimating a year, it could be quicker. You know, we've essentially got to have at least twenty so that I can turn in the grants and then, you know, get, get the money allocated. And a lot of that does depend on the federal government, you know, if they shut down, it slows things down. But, so that's why I basically estimate about twelve months of covering that person's salary. After that, just like the self-help, it should always be able to continuously to fund itself. You know, if we're building, they give us money to build.
I just want a ballpark number to kind of think about the budget, all right? And then I want to, you know, really commend Habitat and all those who worked at Habitat. The houses you built in Milford, the ones you built in Bowling Green, they are quality houses. I mean, they're houses that anybody who lived there would be really proud, they're, they're top-notch. So I think you're doing a great job in that sense. The last question is, you said you purchased Angelwood, which is the
Yes, Project Faith.
Row houses behind, I just had a brain cramp, Caroline Manor.
Yes, sir.
Not Caroline Manor itself, right?
Correct.
The, the houses behind, that was a development that kind of slowed down thirty years ago or so.
Exactly. We're really excited to step in and do some renovations, do some repairs. As an organization, on October twenty-third, our entire staff is coming down to beautify the neighborhood. We're very excited about taking care of the, those, those homes.
Okay, so you, you have homes, but you have some existing lots too, right?
This is correct.
So you're going to put a couple of houses on those lots?
That is, we, we plan to, yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I just have a few, and then I appreciate it, and I'm, I'm excited for the Bridlewood Habitat Homes. We're going to get a shovel on the ground soon, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, absolutely means
Before the end of this year. We're, we're working on it now, the developers just got to get the roads a little bit further along, but the county staff has been great getting us to where we need to go. So we, we're all set. We have our first eight self-help loans already sitting at the queue at the USDA. So it's really just a matter of, once we can get egress and start, start doing that, we'll be able to start building the self-help. And then the teachers and first responders' homes, because of the funding with the state budget, the down payment assistance will become available in February, so we'll start closing on those homes in February.
And so there'll be twenty of them?
Correct.
Twenty of them going to the Bridlewood, okay.
Yep.
As far as this program, thank you, Mr. Tickle. As far as this program is concerned, this is, this is for like basically any firefighter, EMT, teacher, government worker, correct? Is this, is that, what is this designed for?
Absolutely, yeah. If you're a teacher, first responder, we, we want to help you live in the county that you work and serve, yes.
So this would be Caroline residents that would be getting this?
Correct, yes.
Now, in this program right here, just out of curiosity, because I, I, I mean, this is the first time we're seeing this, and I, I think this is a good idea, but how many units are you talking about? Like, so I'm, I'm seeing renting for a couple of years, but, you know, I mean, if this program's very popular, let's say that we have, you know, thirty or forty people that want to apply for this that are, you know, because there's a lot of new teachers that come in every year, and as well as, you know, deputies and firefighters. So if you have a bunch, how many units are you talking about?
Well, we're a licensed Class A contractor. We can develop, and, you know, we're hoping that, that, you know, there's, there's a lot of misconceptions with Habitat. So we're hoping this Bridlewood, the South Village project really kind of opens the development community's eyes to what we can do and add to the community. So we're hoping that we can continuously partner with the developers already going. But if they don't want to invite us and open us in, we will self-develop. And, because, and then I'll sell lots to local builders, and, and we'll do our own mixed-income neighborhoods. So one way or the other, we're going to provide the need as much as the county and the area wants to support and get behind. We have the capacity to do it.
Okay, but I guess my question, and maybe my question is like, as far as, we say rent for two years. So do we have, do, do we have the rental, I mean, are those places already in this program, I guess? Do we already have in mind what, what places would, would be rented for the two years and going forward before they went to the, to the housing?
There are some, but we can, every, every year when we develop in our little clusters, we want to add one or two titled deed-restricted rental units that they'll own. And so we'll add to the units in the developments that we partner with. I wanted to do that in Bridlewood, but they tell me it's, it's too long in the process, so I couldn't do it. So, but like, for example, we want to apply for a DCHD grant in twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six for our next self-help, combine self-help with the DCHD, partner with the developer, and that would provide us the same number of lots, twenty lots. You know, eight would be self-help, one would be a student build, certain number of those would be the teachers, first responders, and then two or three would be deed, deed and title restricted. And then two or three would be deedal deed and title restricted for rentals for the teachers and first responders. And so you'd always. We'd hopefully every couple of years, we add a few more affordable rentals that they would manage the properties and. Um, you know, and then it just gives us a cycle so that we can have this pipeline of affordability. Um and also it allows us to really show the federal government that we have this pipeline. So we can take advantage of the funds that are available and bring these affordable dollars to Caroline.
Okay, I will talk to you more offline about it too, because I have some other questions, but I won't do it here. All right, uh, sounds good. It sounds like a really good program. Anyone else have any questions?
What's the date of the Angelwood thing again? You said October twenty-third?
Yes, sir. October twenty-third, our entire staff will be in that neighborhood.
You didn't have a time or you just?
It's gonna be nine to noon.
Nine to noon?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, we are moving on now to appointments. Uh the Board of Equalization, I think um. Western Caroline had one and so did um Matta um Madison had one. Oh, and you had one as well? Okay, Mr. Underwood?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to uh recommend a reappointment, Mr. reappoint Mr. Ernest Rollins to the Board of Equalization.
All right, a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, I have one, uh Ms. Nicole Bristow. So I'll make that a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Uh. You had one, I thought you we did yours. No, we.
I mean, for, I'm sorry, what?
Okay, um, do we have, uh, Mr. Forehand had one, but I don't have my, uh, do you? Do you have the name?
What I believe is the name from this text was James Chandler Priggen, P-R-I-D-G-E-N.
Okay, so I'll take that as a, I'll move.
One of those of real estate, was yours a real estate?
Mine was a real estate.
Okay, we're not, okay. We're good.
Mine is two, so we get plenty.
Oh, good.
All right, so um so I'll take a motion for uh uh Mr. James Chandler Priggen.
So move.
Second.
And a second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and I think that our Board of Equalization is now full. Um Economic Development Authority. Mr. Underwood?
I'd like to now re-nominate Mr. Ernest Rollins to the uh Economic Development Authority. I mean, excuse me, Mr. Andy Andrews. To the Economic uh Development Authority.
I have a motion for Mr. Andrews. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I am going to reappoint Mr. Bill Farmer.
So I have a m- motion for Mr. Farmer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Long or Mr. Underwood. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um that takes care of the EDA.
I have one.
Oh, you do have one?
Yeah.
Okay, go for it.
Um I'm gonna motion that uh Mr. Wanderminer, formerly the president of the Caroline Chamber, be appointed to the EBA.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now, uh Building Code Board of Appeals. Building Code Board of Appeals.
I think that was mine. Um but it expired in November. Did staff ask if he wanted to serve again? Mr. Park? Okay, would you please? Because if you ask him, we can make that appointment next month. Thank you.
All right.
That was a hard one to fill before.
Yep. Okay, so we're, there's nothing for that one then at this time. All right, next month, yep. Okay, uh we will go on to the consent agenda. Does anyone like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I was just gonna pull item H just to read the resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, sure. All right, does anyone else want anything else pulled? All right, so I will, if if staff. Um could, there's question, staff, someone has a question on D. So.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, maybe you have the answer, Mr. Thomas. I know there was a question about um. The roads being clear with parking if they were taken in. But I don't see anything in the packet saying that they agreed to that in writing. All I have is, I mean, do we have an official? Or just a phone call?
The official part, I should have let it go through the first time. The official part is, once the roads are turned over to VDOT, they have to be clear. So by doing this, once VDOT accepts the roads, they'll have to maintain the roads clear. Now they're private roads. So you could literally park your car in the street not correctly, but when they're accepted by the state, they will have to, you know, they can't block traffic.
So your request last month was just to make sure they realize that if it went to VDOT, that that's what was gonna happen.
That.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, so I have a um motion. Mr. Seeley, do you mind if we just accept yours and then let it have you read it after?
Sure.
Motion to accept A through H.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Mr. Seeley?
Yes, I would just like for the record to read this since it's. I think it's something that we overlook as time moves on and there's a lot of folks that do wear the pink ribbon in in memory or in in declaration, but. Resolution declaring October is the Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Caroline County. Whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month is a worldwide annual campaign in October. Involving thousands of organizations seeking to highlight the importance of breast breast cancer awareness, education and research. And whereas the National Breast Cancer Foundation reports that in twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four, an estimated three hundred and ten thousand seven hundred and twenty women. And two thousand eight hundred men will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer and an estimated forty-three thousand seven hundred women. And five hundred and thirty men will die of breast cancer in the United States. And whereas breast cancer is the second leading cause of cancer among women in the United States. With one in eight women being diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime. And whereas. It is of vital importance to increase the public knowledge and early detection and regular screening to treat breast cancer. At an early stage and save lives. Whereas this October, we will display pink ribbons and wear pink clothing to raise awareness. We also unveilize of those lost to the disease, recognize breast cancer survivors, encourage those currently battling the disease. And applaud the effort of our medical professionals and research researchers working to find a cure. Now therefore be it resolved at the Caroline County Board of Supervisors. Hereby proclaims October twenty-twenty-four as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Caroline County. And encourages all employees and residents to raise the awareness by wearing pink throughout the month. Adapted this eighth day of October twenty-twenty-four, Charles M. Colly Jr. Clerk and Jeff Jeffrey S. Black Chairman. And and I do think we've had a number of folks in the county that have have had this and we've lost to this. I just think it's important. We. Make it aware that we're, you know, yeah, it's in the board packet, but why we're doing, why we're doing this and all the people it does affect.
Thank you. All right, I'm moving on to uh the closed meeting. I guess that's the next uh. So Ms. Long, I will take a motion.
I move that this board convene in closed meeting pursuant to the consultation with legal counsel. Exception section two point two dash three seven one one. Eight point eight of the Code of Virginia for consultation with the county attorney regarding specific aspects of the county zoning ordinance. Requiring the provision of legal advice and the prospective business exception of section two point two dash three seven seven one one. Eight point five of the Code of Virginia to discuss perspective business or industry in and around the Reedy Church District. About which no previous announcement has been made.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go in the closed session. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're, we're in closed session.
Chair, I'm just gonna work with the Planning Commission here now that you're enclosed. So we'd like to have the Planning Commission come into close just on the legal aspect. Um and so I'm gonna have them. Call their meeting to order and go into closed session.
Okay.
Um they will not be joining you for close for the second item, the the business economic development item. Mr. Shorts, if you could call the Planning Commission to order and then um move it into closed session with that motion.
All right. Special meeting of the Caroline County Planning Commission will come to order. Present to my far left is.
However you want to call yourself to order.
Steve Rollins, representing Madapenaire District. To his right is Dr. Carol Horton, representing Fort Royal. To her right is Mr. J.D. Young, our vice chair, representing Reedy Church. My name is Bob Schwartz. I am the chairman representing Bowling Green. To my right is Mr. George Weber, representing Madison District. And on the far right is Mr. Richard Williams, representing Western Caroline. And I move that this planning commission convene in closed meeting pursuant to the to the consul- consultation. With legal counsel exception of section two point two dash three seven three seven one one. Section eight point eight of the Code of Virginia. Consultation with the county attorney regarding specific aspects of the county zoning ordinance requiring the provision of legal advice. Is there a motion?
I would make that motion, sir.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Weaver, seconded by Mr. Young and uh Mr. Williams. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We are now in closed session. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We are now in closed session.
Mr. Chair, we ready for this? I made that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors certify that to the best of each board member's knowledge that one only public matters, business matters lawfully accepted from the open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which this certification applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Underwood, do you so certify that everything that we went into closed session about was just what we talked about in closed session?
I so certify.
Mr. Seeley?
I so certify.
Mrs. Long?
I so certify.
Mr. Thomas?
I so certify.
And I so certify as well. All right, we are now to the...
Mr. Chair, we just need to get the Planning Commission out of close as well.
Okay.
Commissioners, I move that the Caroline County Planning Commission certify that to the best of each commissioners' members' knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which this certification applies. And only specific public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the motion, by the commission. That is, in the form of a motion.
I second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Mr. Rollins, do you so certify?
I do so certify.
Dr. Horton, do you so certify?
I do so certify.
Mr. Young, do you so certify?
I do so certify.
Mr. Weber, do you so certify?
I do certify.
Mr. Richard Williams, do you so certify?
I do so certify.
And I as well certify. Motion carries.
Okay. All right. All right, we are to our public comment period. The public comment period is a time for the public to talk about anything that is not a public hearing. So, anything that is not a public hearing may be discussed. So, if you would like to come down, would just state your name and your voting district.
Good evening. My name is Linda Devella, and I'm from Mattapone Voting District. I want to address about the rural preservation being rezoned. I believe that you guys need to listen to your citizens. We do not want it. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, Chairman Black, members of the board. Mary Hodge, Bowling Green District. I rode home south on Route 1 today for Massaponics. There is construction everywhere, massive apartment housing complexes being built, and many more huge developments planned in Thornburg. Lines of dump trucks driving into the site where two massive cranes tower in the sky, building the water park that Charlie Payne got approved in just a few short months that will congest our roadways and tax water resources even further. Is this what you want Caroline to become? We residents don't, and I really don't think you do either. Personally, I would be happy if you built a wall right at our northern border. Please don't Spotsylvania or Caroline. And speaking of kowtowing to Charlie Payne and getting votes of approvals of his projects without full oversight, when you approved the Amazon Data Center, were you aware that there would be battery storage facilities on this campus? It says so in this freelance star report, if I'm allowed to hold up a visual. Are you aware of the rampant fires that took place both in New York State last year and California just recently that burnt for days, spewing toxic fumes and could not be extinguished, forcing residents to seal their windows and shelter in place because of the toxic fumes? I'm less than five miles from the Oric Farm, and aren't you supposed to be protecting the health and safety of county residents? How did this get passed into our pert? And another thing, I really does not, I really think it does not make a good impression when you criticize "we citizens" from your dyes. Criticizing public comments and calling people liars does not look very professional. I watch a lot of other county meetings, and I've never heard supervisors make derogatory comments about their constituents' constituents as I have heard in this room. We're all supposed to be in this together. I was very disappointed also that you approved the comp plan change to add more pert area east of Carmel Church last meeting, despite overwhelming citizen opposition and unanimous Planning Commission recommendation of denial. How is the public to know we can trust you? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I appreciate the time that you allowed the public to make comments. I first want to commend Mrs. Nancy Wong for attending the VISA Public Information Meeting about the project pipeline. I was disappointed to see that not more of the supervisors didn't attend this informative meeting. My main topic that I'm here to discuss tonight is, I'll try to keep it a short 15 minutes because I went over this whole thing back in 2022, and apparently it fell on dead ears. I noticed in the back that you've got the Caroline County Board of Supervisors, bylaws and rules and procedures. These did not change from one inauguration to the next. It's the same rules and regulations as were done in 2022. So, why not just assign a number to it instead of rewriting the whole thing? You know, every time, there's new people elected. And just to keep things short, I'd like you to pull up page three. I believe you all have a copy of that. Last time that I spoke, I was kind of put down because they said we've already approved it. So, you know, what I was saying kind of fell on dead ears. But if you look at section 2-4 on page three, it's the same thing from 2022, 2024. But my point is, you notice that 2-4, closed session. And I'm just pointing out that if you go to A, B, and C, they all relate to a closed session. And if you go down to section three, where it talks about officers, I'm sure that you will agree that section 3.1, chair and vice chair, are all officers. But then if you turn the page over and you look at section 3.2, clerk, I don't believe the clerk is an officer of the board. In section 3-3, a parliamentary, I don't believe is an officer of the board. But there's a many, there's many discrepancies from year to year. I tried point note back in 2022. I believe that the rules and the regulations should be assigned a number, just like an ordinance is, and then from each year refer without making...
Mr. Sheville, thank you for your, are you done? Okay, thank you for your, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak at public comment time?
Good evening, Chairman Black, members of the board, members of the Planning Commission as well. Just want to touch back on some opening comments this evening. Chairman Black, I think you're doing a great job of running your meetings. If anything, I think some of the people that sit in the chairs on this stage should maybe look at how they act and how they speak to people before they put that on us out here in the audience. You know, after all, they allow us to speak. No one on this stage allows any resident to speak. You all work for us, and a lot of you have forgotten about that. I think maybe a recall election would do some good, maybe stir things up and make you realize that people want to see change on this board. Not in all areas, just in a few. But yeah, I think you're doing a great job running your meetings, Chairman Black. Good evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Hearing none, I'll declare the public comment period to be closed. All right, our next, our next item is the, on the agenda is the public, the joint public hearing with the Planning Commission. Mr. McKenzie, do we, are they going to open first? Do we open first, or?
We can do everything together, so we just start with the staff report like we normally would.
Go for it. All right.
So, good evening, Mr. Chairman of the Board, members of the board, Chairman of the Planning Commission, members of the commission. At the request of the board and following initiation by the Planning Commission, staff is bringing forth for public hearing the attached text amendment to the zoning ordinance related to data centers uses in the M1 district. At the September 10th Board of Supervisors meeting, staff was directed to draft a text amendment that would reclassify data center uses in the M1 zoning district from uses permitted by right to a use permitted by special exception. Data centers would still be required to comply with the standards of the Plan Innovation and Research Technology Park District via the special exception process. In acting on the proposed amendment, the, after the PC may recommend and the board may also consider and adopt procedural directives related to the implementation, which include the following. The ordinance implementing the amendments can become effective immediately upon adoption or at a later date determined by the board. The board has the authority to carve out a legislative exception to the general application of the amendment, commonly referred to as grandfathering, including accepting from the ordinance properties that are subject to pending applications related to the byright use of property for a data center, such as a site plan, a conditional rezoning, and grant funding provided that such grandfathering is expressly stated in the ordinance. The optional language is included in your draft, and there were a couple of summaries, but what was advertised was the simple extraction of the industrial, data centers as a permitted use and as a byright use, and then moved to the special exception section. So...
That's it? All right, staff, any question?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I do wanted to address the maps that are in your packet.
Okay.
So, within your packet, there were two maps. So, this map is, represents the current available M1 zone properties that are between the acreages of 15 and 74 acres, and those parcels that are 75 acres or greater that have water and sewer available. And so, the inset one here and here, this is in the Ladysmith area. And so, as you can see on this map, there is a large parcel here and here, and I would say that this area here is the industrial park, so it is bisected by a road, and there are some parcels in there that are currently being used. So, but in totality, it is greater than 71 acres. The green parcel there between those two is a 43-acre parcel. and then the Avio data center, which is behind the flying J. So those are parcels that currently Caroline is actively working on right now. And Mr. Wilson can expand more on this particular of those. I just want to explain those maps to you all and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay. Before I, go ahead.
I do have a question.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Go for it, Mr. Sealy.
But your, this particular map does not show all the industrial property that there is in the county and where it's at.
It does not show every single piece of industrial parcel. It shows, the prior map showed the parcels that could have, that are available, that could have a data center on them that is on M1.
But that does not show all the industrials zoning that we currently have.
Not every parcel, no.
So we're not looking at everything?
Well, we're only looking at the parcels.
Just to be fair, just to be fair to everybody watching, this is just the sites that are in question at this point.
No, this is, this is the sites that a data center could be built on. All the industrial parcels in the county cannot have data centers. There are parcels out in Sparta that are zoned M1 that could not have a data center because they don't have the availability of utilities. So the first line of the perk ordinance, because remember if it's on M1, it has to comply with the standards of the perk, even as a byright use. So the first line of that ordinance says that it has to have utilities available, meaning water and sewer.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just trying to cover all the bases of what's available and that we're, we're looking at all, we're not looking at all of the sites.
Well.
I'm just, no, 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 you're right.
You're looking at all the sites that are available.
But you've answered my question. Thank you.
Okay. All right. And so at this time, I'll go ahead and open. Mr. Wilson, did you have something to add or? Okay. All right. So at this time, I'll go ahead and I guess I will, Mr. McKenzie, I'll open it and then I'll need the planning commissions to do the same, correct, to get public comment?
We, we can do, it's a joint public hearing, so we can do one together, the same public hearing. You both listen, you can both ask questions afterwards.
Right.
So that you, your opening the hearing opens it for both.
Okay, for everyone, okay.
Both bodies. And I might just add while I'm up here that, just to clarify, I think before the public hearing that since we were just looking at all the M1, not all the M1 parcels, but the M1 parcels that were of a certain size or with utilities, the, the ordinance that is before you tonight is a very simple ordinance and it would apply to every single M1 parcel in the county regardless of acreage, regardless of whether or not it's in the comp plan perk zone. It would, it would apply very broadly and it would rezone every M1 parcel from allowing data centers by right to requiring a special exception. Just wanted to make that clear since we were talking about different types of M1 parcels, that this, the ordinance that's before you tonight does not get down to that level of specificity. It's a very general ordinance.
Okay. I will go ahead and open the joint public hearing of the planning commission on TXT 05 2024. Public hearing is now open. If the public would like to come down and make comments on this particular public hearing, you have three minutes to state your name and your, name and your voting district, please.
Thank you for bringing this measure forward. I greatly appreciate it as a resident. This is a common sense measure to protect the county and its residents from unwanted or poorly designed data center development. There is not a plot of land within Caroline County that has the electrical infrastructure to support a data center. Every single data center requires an electrical substation. Every single electrical substation requires high voltage transmission lines to be upgraded or to be built at the cost of ratepayers. We are getting a 4% rate increase this fall. Every data center development is another rate increase. This directly impacts residents in addition to the lines being brought across private property owners' property. This issue alone should be enough to pass this measure. Data centers directly impact residents. We are not saying they're not allowed. We're saying that they should be evaluated. They should be considered. Is it appropriate where they are being placed? How many residents are impacted? Every single data center should have to answer the question of where their electricity is coming from? Who's paying for it? How many residents' properties are being condemned for the building of this? Today, you can't ask that question. There is no opportunity. It's by right. If there's a well-designed data center that has responsibly sourced electricity, water, it has low noise and light pollution, and it brings us tax revenue, I can support it. I would support it. Today, I don't have the opportunity to support it. It's by right. It's at the company's discretion. I don't have the right to oppose it or support it. It's up to companies. Let's remember that these are companies. Data centers cost millions of dollars to develop. These aren't residents. These aren't your neighbors. These aren't voters. These are companies and they don't live here. So I ask that you please approve this amendment or this change. I appreciate you bringing it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this matter?
Sorry for the delay to get down here, but members of the board, Chairman, I am Fred Coddin. I'm the managing member.
Sir, can you say your name, please?
Fred Coddin, C O D D I N G.
And your voting district?
I am not a voter here, but I am the managing member of WIC LLC, which owns property on Lady Smith Road, which has been made the subject of a data center application. So that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
It's been several years since I have appeared before the board here in Caroline County. I have done that in behalf of the WIC Associates, which acquired its property on Lady Smith Road in 1985, 40 years ago. Since that time, we've paid taxes to the county. We've never been late. We have granted an easement across the property at the county request for utilities. We granted a request for an easement without any compensation for a red light that's now installed on Lady Smith Road down between Route 95 and Route 1. We agreed, and in my appearances before the board before, to everything, I say everything, that the county requested. The proposed amendment regarding data centers ignores our voluntarily contributions whenever the county requested them. The requested amendment before the board involving data centers will also potentially affect the value of our property if the Matton Plan, which is under contract with us, to build a data center off of Lady Smith Road. That property borders Route 95. It's behind the sheets on Lady Smith Road and there are no immediate residents, residential homes anywhere near our site. We ask that the amendment not be passed if it borrows the Matton Plan. If passed, we simply request that the Matton Plan for that data center be grandfathered Again, thank you for the time and if there are any questions about anything that I've said or the history of our property on Lady Smith Road, I'm available to answer.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Vincent Burke, B U R K E, with the Matton Companies. We would like to testify in opposition of the zoning text amendment here to eliminate the byright use for data centers in the M1. As the planning director showed, there is very few properties that, that a byright use for a data center could be implemented. I think there's a lot of lessons learned from our neighboring counties to the north in a haphazard way, which those, that data center use kind of spread throughout the county without a thoughtful approach. We've worked closely with economic development and your county planning on what we think is a more thoughtful approach. And also the data center users have adjusted as well. They, they want to work on larger plots of land with this utility connection in place and locate those in campuses rather than spread them out. And I think that the reason that your staff and economic development was focused on this as a good outcome is because it doesn't have the same traffic and intensity of some of the larger industrial uses. And at the same time, it has a great boost to the tax revenue. So it doesn't have the strain from the large labor pool to support larger logistics or manufacturing on county services, hospitals, EMS, schools, et cetera. And it provides us boosts, boost to support those for the rest of the county. So we think that targeted implementation is, is a great idea and much more thoughtful than it was done to the north, which created that, that negative impression. To that end, we've been working with your staff for over two years, spent considerable time, effort, money pursuing this byright use and then anticipated on closing on the property this month to have it suggested that the byright use would be pulled. So it was a surprise and disappointment to us to have that kind of late arriving fact. So we would appreciate your consideration in revisiting this and taking more time to see, you know, not to apply such a broad brush because as was mentioned previously, some of those negative impacts aren't present in our case. It borders 95, there's commercial property to the south, industrial property to the west, and preserved to the north. So it really has no residential neighbors. The utilities are proximate in place and again, it's right there on 95. So it already has that commercial impact that this wouldn't be a great addition to. So with that, we would be available to discuss further, but would, would encourage you to reconsider the, the text amendment and take some more time thinking how it's applied because we do think it's a great boost for county revenue without some of the negative impact that larger projects that are more intensive from a traffic and population perspective are to this more rural county. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this?
Good evening. My name's Mark Sandor. I'm in the Mattaponei District. My comment is this, I wish that the board really looks at this whole issue of data centers very seriously. The infrastructure costs are significant and is it fair to the families and, and working people of this county that the, 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 the cost for many of these infrastructure improvements are going to be borne in our electric bills and other utilities? There's also the question of water usage. We got to hear from, from Virginia DEQ, there was a state senator here, and there was, there was questions that were raised that really have not been answered yet. I think this whole issue surrounding data centers and their economic impact needs to be looked at very seriously. You have an example of Loudoun County, their tax rates haven't gone down and so it's an empty promise about tax revenue. And I'd like to know what all this tax revenue that the county needs, what, what is going to, what is it going to be spent on? Why are we so desperate to grasp for these data centers? I, I'm, and that's all I wanted to say. It's gratifying that you all attended the state fair, but last hearing when DEQ was here, there was not one supervisor from this board present. And I'm sure I'm not the only voter that, that noticed that. Thank you.
I thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
My name is Steven Parrish and I am a resident of the Reedy Church District. Just want to take time real quick to, to echo the previous comments about the DEQ hearing and those things, but somewhat less emotional feel, comments, I believe it was a young lady named Julie that mentioned earlier the increase to our costs as citizens to help pay for the data centers electricity and their needs. I've heard some rather vague but large promises of income from these data centers. Sounds kind of appealing. As a citizen, I'd like to see where that money's going. Is it going to lower my electric rates? Is it going to lower our taxes? Those are good things. We know the county needs money. The citizens are not opposed to data centers. We are opposed to the impacts. The impacts that he refers to from traffic and other things, yes, that I understand the data centers won't be bringing in lots and lots of people. But so far, I know more about what it's going to cost me than what it's going to benefit me. So what I would like to do is just spend my three minutes speaking in favor of this amendment, not to stop data centers, but rather so that we can have the time to review each one individually and its impacts individually before it is just automatically granted permission to come and share our county with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Don Herd, Reedy Church District. First and foremost, I'll just very brief, be brief in saying that I support this amendment and, and I think that it's a good thing. I mean, when, when defending two gentlemen that just spoke before me, in defending their opposition to this, they provided us more explanation, they provided you all more explanation concerning their data centers than I think any one of us has, has ever heard in defense of why they should be authorized to do that. That's a good thing. Why don't we take that time for each and every one of these different proposals to hear that type of explanation that we hear in defense of why they think that they should still be able to do it? That's really great in a panic environment. They, they rush to the podium and provide all those explanations. I think it would be really easy to just simply make that text amendment so this becomes the norm and not the exception when those different investments that they're trying to make become a, are put into jeopardy. I will say, you know, I'm, I was an engineer in the Marine Corps. I've done construction. Developers are extremely creative. I will, I live off of Jericho Road, down off of Tate Road, and, you know, I watched Luckstone come in and offer great things to a church and a community center and speak about transition, you know, changing rural transition to industrial in, in an effort to create a, a park. An article was published recently, well, an article was published a short time after, and this speaks to the creativity of these developers. And that was made by Mr. Charlie Payne. The attorney representing Luckstone said that while data centers could become a part of the complex, is not part of the preliminary plan. In legal speak to me and in planning speak to me, that essentially says that at some point, a data center is likely to become part of that Luckstone plan if it remains M1 industry, industrial and by right. Do we want to, again, the map that we were provided, a little bit, I don't want to call it disingenuous, but the developers are creative. Lawyers are extremely creative in the words that they use so as not to limit themselves. And I would say that we have opened ourselves up by changing the perk, changing the designation of that changing the designation of that Luckstone property to industrial, and now giving them by right to do exactly what the lawyer said, that while not part of their preliminary plan, could very well be part of their future plan. And if you look on the map that was provided to us, right across the road is all of the utilities available. So if we keep that statement, all utilities available, and they say while not part of their preliminary plan, it could become part of their plan. I think we can, you know, for all
Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding the public hearing?
Good evening, members of the board, members of the planning commission, Kevin Collins, Reedy Church District. I'll pose a couple of questions, I, I know I don't get answers, but I can provide those for you. If I want to build a wedding venue on my property to serve 50 to 200 people, I have to get a special exemption. If I want to rezone my property so my mother-in-law can live in a smaller house on the 10 acres that I have, I need a special exemption. But you're telling me that 100 acre data center site that's gonna pull 300 megawatts of power and require new transmission lines and substations doesn't have to go through a special exemption? Just that alone, this amendment needs to be approved. The gentleman that spoke for this amendment earlier, both of them, we understand that your property is viable for a data center, or it, it may be in the process of becoming a data center. At no point did anyone say we're taking that right away from you. All the citizens of Caroline County want is to know what's going on and not to be blindsided by these projects. All this does is give a layer of visibility to everybody within the county, not just the six members of the board and the six members of the planning commission during closed sessions. It needs to be out in the public. The Luckstone Data Center, I'll call it that, because our economic development authority has been advertising it that for well over two to three years, even before any of this was a thing. They also advertised the Aldon Megasite, which is 400 acres of rural preservation. All of the Luckstone property was rural preservation. Why is it okay for our economic development, or economic development authority to advertise land that is not zoned, does not have the utilities in place, but can continuously tell, we've got the electricity, we've got the water, we've got the reuse system? The only reuse system we have is the water that's getting dumped back into the Polcat Creek. There's no pipes in place to transport this magic reuse water. And if there are, we're gonna have to pay for it as citizens, not the data centers. No point has anybody stepped up from any of these companies and said, oh yeah, we'll foot the bill for that. Or hey, we'll, we'll, uh, in, improve Drybridge Road and make it so, you know, trucks can get down it and people can down at the same time. So yeah, we do need some oversight on data centers, a lot more than has been in this county. We're not saying we don't want them, we want guardrails. We want smart growth, and we want to put these things where they belong. Thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this public hearing? Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this public hearing? Hearing no other, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Board, how do we wish to proceed? But I'll turn it over to the planning, I'm sorry, I'm turning it over to the planning commission, I guess.
Commissioners, do you have any? My mic went out on me last time. Commissioners, any questions of staff or legal?
Not for me, sir.
No question. Mr. Hughes, I do have a couple of questions, sir. I thought you were gonna get off easy, didn't you?
Of course not.
If this text amendment is passed, does it not give the county, i.e. planning commission and/or board of supervisors, more control over where data centers may be placed? In other words, land presently zoned M1 that is not within a PERT area would not have the benefit of by right building a data center? Would that be correct?
That is correct, all properties zoned M1 would have to have a special exception.
Okay, that was my question, thank you, sir.
Mr. Hughes, while you're there, could you somewhat give us an idea of the advantages and disadvantages of approving this amendment?
So the advantage is, you do have an additional public process. If there was a potential site that had particular issues that you needed to mitigate that are not mitigated by the current ordinance, it would give the county an opportunity to impose conditions. Now bear in mind, those M1 uses would still have to abide by the PERT, but the special exception process is created, was created to address those individual and unique characteristics of every project. So if there was some, some unique characteristic or, of a particular parcel that the county wanted to impose a condition, it would provide the opportunity to do that. On the other side, I think that, if we speak of, it's only another step in the process for those who are seeking to do a project. So I don't know if there's necessarily, you know, a disadvantage or advantage, it's just another step in the process. Whereas today, they don't have to go through that process.
And the benefit of the county would be what?
The benefit to the county, like I said, is it would, in those, each case would be looked at individually. And if there was some unique situation or instance, or something that needed to be mitigated, then the county would have an opportunity to mitigate that if it was not covered by the development standards of the PERT ordinance.
Okay. Do we have enough information? With the information that we've received, do we have enough information to really make an educated and legal decision about?
Well, I can't tell you how much information is enough information for you.
Okay.
May I speak, please?
Yeah, I was gonna say, well, I'll rephrase the question. This came at us pretty fast, and we're trying to wrap our heads around it. We, as a commission, we have not had an opportunity to really discuss or research this. I just, I'm just not sure. That's the reason I asked for the advantages and disadvantages. I'm just not, I'm not clear in my decision-making as to if this is a benefit or not. So I'm just, you know, I would like to have a little bit more information. So I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not asking the right question. Have you all had time to really give us all of the information that's available?
Well, I would say, given you what's available, I would say this has happened at a very quick pace. And there are, there may be alternatives to this ordinance. There may be, there are many different ways, I mean, different jurisdictions attack this in different ways. And so in the, the two weeks since this came up, you know, we've not had a lot of time to investigate all of the options and that may be out there. We've just been working to try to address and figure out, you know, what the impacts of this particular ordinance amendment would be.
Sure. You know, we've been accused in the past of making harsh, hasty decisions, and I don't want that to continue. I don't like to continue down that road, I'd like to be a little more thorough and have a little more information about this before we could make a decision on it. That's my point. Thank you.
Mr. Hughes, really, to me, this boils down to a very simple question. Land that is zoned M1, the landowner, as it stands now, by right has the authority to put in a data center. Let's say he was able to get the utilities, he can put in a data center, even though it's outside of a PERT. By going by right, it brings more, and I don't like to use the word control, but more influence by the county as to where a data center can be placed, given the utilities and the location and the impact it would have upon the community. So to me, it, it's a very simple, it, it, to me, it's not complex. So I, I believe Mr. Weber had some comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair. As the oldest statesman at this table, I like the idea of being able to oversee the effect that it's going to have on our residents. And I think by using and approving this text amendment, I think we'll have better control and be able to say to the citizens, we looked at it very carefully, and it's not just gonna be a hodgepodge situation that every place in the whole world is gonna have a data center. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments by the commission?
Chairman, are we, am I in order to make a motion? Okay.
Chairman Black, I believe that is all the commissioners have at this point, thank you.
All right, we'll come up here to the board of supervisors then. Board members, Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Hughes, part of this, the reason for this was, was just to confirm the county had an extra step, and they could make sure they knew where data centers were going. I hear a lot of people say today, they, you know, they'd like the idea, it's just we have to make sure they're in the right spot. On the map you had, where you showed us the M1 sites, can you show that again, please, and then tell us, are, are all of those, well, that, you can go back, the one that had the data center listings? That one? Are, are all of those data center projects active, or are they just concepts of a plan?
Mattamede has a site plan under review. Bazaar has submitted a site plan, Lady Smith has submitted a site plan. Bull Church Data Center has submitted a rezoning application. MC Dean, a piece of that property has been to the TRC for review with staff. And the Vio Data Center was a, is already approved. So those that are listed, the, the Good Earth site, I know there's a firm that has interest, but it has to go through a rezoning process because it has proffers on it that need to be amended, so.
So, so if, if this amendment passed as it is right now, the only one we would have extra control over is Good Earth?
And the Bull Church, which has a application on it. But if it was to pass right now, they would go through special exception process, correct?
Okay, and, and, and part of this, and I, and I understand the citizens concerned, because I was concerned as much. Ms. Yandor and I had conversations earlier, well, a few months ago, I think, about a data center project that we weren't aware of, that was in the M1 site. So when somebody makes an application in the M1, it goes to planning as a by right, correct?
That is correct.
But now go to your other map, and that, and that would show those sites we talked about before are basically all the large campus-style data centers we could have?
That have utilities, correct.
And again, the county, the county doesn't have to provide water to any data center project. So if somebody pops up on the M1, where's no utilities, we don't have to provide water?
If there are no utilities available, it wouldn't be eligible for the, it couldn't comply with the ordinance.
But if there, but if there are utilities, we have no, no other authority because it's by right as it is?
Other than the authority, like you said, if the, and Joy can speak to the particulars of the utility ordinance, but if the, if it's within the parameters of the current allowances for meter size, then that is correct.
Right, and, and that's something that Mr. Shebel has said time and time again. If it's over a four-inch meter, the county will discuss with whatever the project is the cost of providing water, which could be whatever Mr. Shebel determines is best in the county's interest. All right, that's, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Mr. Underwood?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hughes, so your understanding is that the purpose of this ordinance from your mindset is to ensure that if a data center, a person wants to put a data center in a certain M1 district, that is where we want that data center to be, correct? Isn't that really what we're trying to do here?
Well, I think the, the ultimate goal, or the ultimate result of the ordinance, if it's amended.
No, not the result, our goal. What is, what is our goal with this text amendment?
Mr. Underwood, I'm not really clear with the goal.
Well, see, I think you should have a clear understanding. If you're, if you're given a task, you should have a clear understanding of what the outcome is. The outcome is not, from my perspective, is not to eliminate data centers, is to ensure that we control where they can and cannot go. All M1s are not the right place, or data centers cannot even go in those M1s. So for us to say blanket M1, we're giving the impression to the people in the county that an M1, that a data center can go in any M1 area, doesn't, but that's, but that's not true, because there are other regulations that they have to meet in order to go there, including size. So we're, we're about to set forth a blanket. I say right intention, wrong dimension. The intent of what we're trying to do in ensuring that growth occurs for data centers in specific areas is correct. But blanket is, is absolutely ridiculous. And the second part of this is, we have never, in the 13 or 14 years I've been here, sit here and had a joint meeting where the planning commission had not a clue of what's going on with, with this text amendment. We've never done this. And we're rushing to do something, and we are creating consternation because we don't know ourselves what we want. We listen to the public, we listen to possible developers, we listen to economic development, we listen to the county administrator, but there is no set goal. I know what I would like to see. But in order to do this text amendment, and have a text amendment that's worth its salt, there should be some research and effort put into ensuring that it's what we want. This here is a travesty, in my opinion.
Mr. Seeler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna leverage Mr. Underwood's comments to start with, is that no set goal. So all the M1 sites, and I don't know that any size makes any difference for a data center. If they decided they could put one in an M1 site, they could do it currently under the M1 zoning that they currently have, because it's not, it's a permitted use. So you're right, we don't have a goal. So I think this sets forth a goal for us to know where To know where these data centers are going to show up, because the first time I saw. The one on six thirty nine over across from Madison Elementary School was at a Dominion Power meeting. And somebody said, why are they developing a substation and power lines all the way to this? Unbeknownst to myself and I conversed with another board member said. What is this? Neither one of us knew that that was a data center because it was an M one site. So we had no insight into what was going on at all. And I think that is the major, the major crux of what what we've heard here tonight from the folks that live here. I understand the folks that are buying the land and I think we can work with most of them to get where they need to be. But we need to listen to the folks that actually live here and say, they want to know where these sites are. We need to give them the ability to understand the thought process and we now have power lines coming and again. We don't condemn land for power lines coming to a data center. But if we approve a data center, we all are aware that that means that. Power must be provided by Dominion or Rappahannock Electric to that site because we've said that's where we want it to be. I understand that every M one site on the other side of the county is not eligible necessarily. But I do think that we have plenty of sites on this side that we didn't anticipate being data center sites. We did not anticipate that. So the board asked for this decision, not Mr. Hughes, it was this board, we voted to bring this forward. To actually stop some of this so we could get a handle on where these data center sites were going, who's putting them in and how big they are. I I was shown a site that we have five hundred and some acres, only seventy nine or a hundred acres is approved. For M for M one, but they're advertising a mega site, which was a surprise to me because I did not know that. Until I went and looked at the county webpage and saw it. I don't think that's how we should learn about these sites as board members. I think that's something that should be communicated to all of us. On a regular basis as this moves down the pike. M one sites are numerous on the west side of the county. We've had sites that have been sitting for many, many years that have not been developed. They've been under various contracts, but nothing has come to fruition. So I I think the way to to actually. Facilitate where we want data center sites is to actually move forward with what we proposed. And we did that from the board table last board meeting. We all pretty much agreed that that was something we needed to get under control. We voted that way, staff brought us this, and I think that's what we need to move forward with. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Long.
Mr. Sealy, I agree with most of what you've said and I too was surprised about the M one and the. By right use, well, we found that out some time ago and wondering how we could get around it. What I need time to figure out how we can do is how to. Get a handle on notification and on control, but yet also realize that in good faith. We have spent and staff have spent time with, uh, applicants. And when they purchased land, they had the right. And I don't think it is right to change rules to the middle of a game. However, I do think we need to get control on the process and I think moving forward, we need to get control over it. I don't, I think we're looking at not just being as far as. The rules of the game are fair or unfair would be right to change, uh, on. Companies that have already in good faith been discussing with staff. And with property owners and and moving forward with this. And to get a good handle on that, I think that I would like to. Defer a decision until we could have a good legal council session with staff. On how we can do this and make it work as best we can for everybody. If that is a possibility, I do not know, but that is what my, um. My feeling is that yes, we need to get a handle on some things. We do have the park overlays, which gives us some some comfort. But I'm not sure about changing rules of the middle of the game for applicants that have already been in serious negotiation. Uh, we may be like opening ourselves up for some things there. And I would like some more time to talk to, um, to our League of Council on that issue. And try to come up with a way to word the motion to sort of. Do what we need to be done, but be fair to everybody. That's all I have to say at this time.
Yeah, Mr. Thomas.
Mr. McKenzie, let me ask you a couple of quick questions.
Yes, sir.
Because I know based on what we've said and Mr. Hughes, we we pretty much have what we, what's in process already, but. Is it possible to refine the text amendment we have? To add things like if it's outside the perk, then it has to go through a special exception or if it's. Under a certain acreage, it has to go through a special exception.
Yes, sir.
Doesn't seem like a big change to me, so we could do it right now, but I'm sure you're going to think it is.
Yeah, unfortunately, I I I will agree with the first part, disagree with the second part, agree that all those changes are possible. Um, but we would need to, that what would really need to happen there is we need to make different definitions for the different types of. Of projects you're talking about as far as acreage or or whatever, um, and and. Work those into the ordinance in a, in a predictable way. Um, the the issue being that we have to treat, you know, a defined use uniformly within a district. So we can create different classes or categories of use and treat them however you want to treat them. But we need the time to craft those definitions for those classes or cat categories of use. And then show them to you and make sure that they accurately reflect what you want them to be. Um, so yes, I I don't think it would be something that we could amend on the fly. Because again, what what's before you right now is just deleting. From the by right section of of the M one chapter and adding a special exception, we don't. We don't even have the definition section of the zoning ordinance advertised before you tonight. And I think at a minimum, you'd need new definitions. Sorry to be, you know, um. A challenge, but I I think that you would need some more work on the zoning ordinance for that.
Mr. Black.
Mr. Sealy.
So if we don't do anything tonight, anybody could come to the planning office between now and the time that we. Actually send us through planning and do something. And they could turn in a site plan, they could, they could do a number of things to be. Held in a, in a grandfathered kind of condition.
Well, so I'm going to parse that too. Let's see, be, treat everyone the same way. Um, if you don't act tonight, yes, a- anyone could come in and file a site plan. Um, with with the planning office or a zoning application or anything like that. But the question is not just, do you have a filed site plan or a filed zoning application? You as a board have to make a decision as to whether you want to treat applicants that have those pending applications. Under the old law or the new law, that's the grandfathering and that's option four that was in the the draft ordinance. It is up to you as to whether or not you want to do that. So, you know, in theory, if you go. And and amend the ordinance to be more tailored and say, I want more definitions and I want to be clear about this. You could then say, we're not grandfather, we're not, we decline option four, we're not grandfathering everyone, the ordinance is going to say what we want it to say. Or, you know, you could, you know, if you move forward with the ordinance tonight, you're going to have to, or at a later date. You you're going to have to have that grandfathering conversation about, do we want pending applications to be?
What's the dividing line? Does Mr. Wilson have to tell me or can you tell me, what's the dividing line between. Where's an application is and where that process is? And whether they are grandfathered or whether they're too far along, because I I don't hear anybody telling me definitively. Where we are, because there's a number of properties up there. The the one on six thirty nine that I learned about at the Dominion Power site. I mean, the Dominion Power meeting and they started showing us that power's going here and power's going here, we had no idea that was taking place. And that's well underway and that's got additional land that's already advertised as a mega site that we haven't seen as a board.
Yeah, so I, you know, on the grandfathering thing, you know, what what, but the rationale there is that that's. That is a discretion that you have as a board.
For how long?
For, so, yeah, to, if there's a, any pending application that im- implicates the zoning ordinance, you have the ability to say. This came in before we made this amendment, so we can decide whether we want to treat it under the laws it was. When they filed or the laws it was once we've made this amendment.
And what's the determining factor on that, just us?
I think the, it, yes, you have to decide as a board whether you're going to extend the law, for whatever reason, calls it. An act of legislative grace, I'm not making that up. You have to decide whether or not to extend that to those applications and that is why it is in that draft ordinance list listed as optional.
But we could say today, Chris, we could say today is our line in the sand. If you don't have anything before today, even though it's going to take us a month or so to fix the ordinance. Only things that we have today, which is those sites we just saw, would be grandfathered.
That's an interesting question. I mean, I think the when and how to grandfather applications is ultimately within your discretion. Yes, Mr. Thomas, I think.
That's why I'm specifically saying today is the line in the sand day, so.
Yeah, but if we ta- if we do one, two and three, every, the line in the sand is moved back. And we get to look at every one of those before they move forward. Which is what, is what the vast majority of everybody here is asking us to do is, please go review. All of those that were industrial property that we didn't know about and didn't come through special exception. That's. I mean, everybody that was a citizen, that's what they asked for. A- and that's why, um, you know, one, two and three that's in this ordinance that was handed out to us. I think is important because it gives everybody an opportunity to see what those are. And I think that's really what the the folks that came and have been here before really want.
Mr., um, I guess, Mr. Hughes, I got a couple of questions. One of the things that, um, it has shocked me to is see the proliferation and I don't want to become. Data center central, I I really don't, but looking at them, can you put the map, Mr. Sadler, can you put the map back up? Oh, that one's. That one's fine. Suppose, um, we have like the M one Bull Church Road, you have the M one, um, the north, the Matan, I guess it is, the one Lady Smith. If they were not to do a data center and can they, because right now they can do a data center by right unless we change this ordinance, correct?
Correct.
So if we change this ordinance, and this is the thing that. I think we need to have a discussion about this too. This is the thing that that concerns, I mean, I'm not saying, hey, look, it's. Is if we say, all right, it's it's got to be special exception. Can they go back and say, hey, we're going to do by right commercial now because it's costing us too much money? Can they go by, say, we're going to go back to the drawing table and we're going to put, we're going to put a, um, you know, some sort of warehouse. With a thousand trucks a day going, um, onto Lady Smith Road.
They could use, they could do any permitted M one use, that is correct.
So, all right.
Mr. McKenzie, option four, let's let's take, can you review option four for me?
Sure thing, so. Option four, so let me just kind of put this in context, especially for everyone listening in. This is the draft ordinance making this amendment. And and we put in, here it is, it's on two sides. Some additional, just based on, again, because of the speed that this was going at. We.
Too fast, but.
We, we put in some additional optional language that is just at your disposal, you know, it it is for your consideration. And option four is the grandfathering paragraph. So you you have the choice to grandfather properties. This is not nonconforming uses, this is not vested rights. This is a very specific, narrow legal lane that says if if there are properties. That are in process with an application involving the county. So what we're thinking is to to your point, Mr. Sealy, talking site plan applications, talking rezoning applications. And then, you know, and like a grant funding application that's premised on zoning. You got any, any property that that falls within one of those categories, you have the ability to say. We're going to treat that property under the old law in in, under the sense of fairness. To to Mrs. Long's point, to not change the rules in the middle of the game. Um, and and consider it by right for the purposes of those application. And but you have to do so in the ordinance that you're adopting. But that, that is a very, very narrow amount of protection for those processes and really. They wouldn't obtain any protectable right until they finish that site plan and it gets approved. Or they finish that rezoning and gets approved. If they're denied, then then they have, they're still subject to the legislative grace of grandfathering. So it's a, it's a pretty narrow area, but it's something that's at your disposal and that's why we included it for your review.
I guess my next question is, since we've we've never. Done this before. Are we putting ourselves in legal jeopardy? Regarding this text amendment, seeing that we, we have a process in place now. That goes before the planning commission, planning commission has a hearing, comes to the board, the board has a hearing. Are we opening ourselves up for possible legal jeopardy? Because we've never done this. We we we've in. For fifty years I lived in this county, we've, we've never. That I'm aware of, that I'm aware of, Mrs. Sealy says we have, but. And I've, in in the fifty years I've been, I've never ever. Gone through this process. There's always been the transparency of the hearing with the planning commission. Planning commission takes a vote, they make their vote, it comes to the board. There's the research done and then there there's a vote by the board to send it back or to approve or deny.
And so.
What Pandora's box are we opening?
Yeah, so and as you come to expect probably, I'm not going to give you a yes or no answer, but I have, but I do have an answer for you. I think procedurally, you are complying with the procedural requirements for action, you know, that's. It's my job to ensure that you do. Um, and so while it it is quite unusual, um, you have procedurally comply with the requirements to. To act however substantively. You you are correct that, you know, when you review this process, it is usually a a process of kind of. Growth and iteration over the period of planning commission board review. And it is the rare text amendment that makes it from the beginning of that process to the end without any change. So I think what you, you, what you're substantively, you would not be putting yourself in legal jeopardy, but you may not be getting the best legal product. If you don't go through that, that typical process.
So then how do I have my cake and eat it too? How do I ensure that what we've done with the, I think there's six or seven. Data centers that that are in process, I believe, right now. How do I? Hold that in this hand? And prevent the door from swinging open on this side until we can put something in place to. Try to mitigate, as Mr. Black said, becoming data center central. Can we do that?
Sure, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think the short answer is yes, and there's like, like Mr. Hughes said. Different jurisdictions have have tackled this problem in a variety of ways and and staff can certainly bring you. A a variety of menu of options for what you want to accomplish. I think what this hearing has has helped to put into relief at least is the specific goal, right? So what what is before you tonight is, I think someone said a broad brush, it it. It addresses every M one parcel in the county, full stop. It it makes no distinction for M one parcels that are in the perk zone, in the comp plan perk zone or outside of it. And and legally it cannot, um, but there are other tailoring changes. But there are other tailoring changes you can make to the, to the ordinance, like I discussed with Mr. Thomas, about parcel size, or the type of development. Or, you know, if you recall solar, we had an overlay district for solar that said, this is in the zoning ordinance, remember the comp plan is separate from the zoning ordinance? We did an overlay district in the zoning ordinance that said, this is where we want it. And you could say, we want, we're okay with it by right in this overlay district, and it can mirror the comp plan, but it can't be the comp plan. So, you know, and I'm, that's a lot of information, but that's a, a few of options off the top of my head that you could tailor if that's what you want. And all staff would need would be directive from the board about what you want to accomplish. Whether you want to just say, I think as Mr. Seeley has said, everything M1, special exception, full stop. Or you want to say, we want to look at other options and then decide. And what Mr. Thomas has said was, you know, we want to, we want to make sure that there's going to be no grandfathering for anything that happens after this, while we deliberate this. Because I guess, and I'm sorry if I'm not being particularly clear, but there is, you know, the, there's nothing you can, like any other, if you were to defer tonight, you can always come back to the straight amendment. If you don't like the tailored approach, you can say, no, actually, the, the straight one was the best one. And you can choose who to grandfather or not to grandfather.
Would we defer back to the planning commission?
Yeah, and that's a good point to bring up.
Yeah, they go first, I'm saying, so we could.
Yeah, the, 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 the planning, you cannot act until you get a recommendation from the planning commission.
That's what I'm saying, so they didn't recommend anything right now.
Right, they have to vote first.
We're just doing dialogue, right?
Yes, right, and then they would vote first, yes.
Go back to them.
Okay. But, okay.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Planning Commission, I guess we'll take a vote from you guys as far as what you want to do, and then we'll discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, do you have any further questions of staff or legal?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Dr. Horton.
A question from council. So, um, if we decide to defer this so it can be tailored exactly right, is there a legal way to stop applications coming in while we're in the process of tailoring it?
So there's no way to stop applications from being filed. That, that is, anyone's prerogative to file a site plan or a zoning application. But certainly, the, the board ultimately, when it makes that, and I think you could probably make a recommendation on this, Dr. Horton, again, when it makes that grandfathering decision. Because an, an application is only kind of relevant to this analysis if the board elects to grandfather, right, to say, we're going to treat that application under the old law. But it has, it has the choice, it can say, we're going to do it, or we're not going to do it. So if the board says, no, you know, this tailored approach seems to address our concerns, and we see no need to grandfather old applications, they're going to fit into one of the buckets we've created, and they're going to play by the new rules, and we feel that's equitable, then whether or not they file an application at any time becomes irrelevant. But we cannot stop anyone from filing a site plan application or a rezoning application. You know, as, as part of the, as part of their, you know, development process.
So, so while we are tailoring it, more applications may come in.
They may well come in, and then the board, you and the board lets decide how, what, if anything, you want to do with those applications from a grandfathering approach. When, you know, whether you want to extend them that legislative grace, for whatever reason. And, or, or not, uh, so it will be ultimately up to you. But the, the, the big thing will be, you know, you know, if, if it goes back for tailoring, we, you know, as it stands right now, I think, you know, that you're going to get kind of a wide menu of options. Because it seems like, you know, it, you know, there's, we, we, we're, we need, the more information that the staff can get about what you want addressed, the easier that tailoring process is.
Okay, you can stay there, and maybe Mr. Hughes can help me on this one too. So if we defer tonight, the app, I'm not worried about applications coming in, the ones that are already there, that are in the planning stages or whatever. If we defer tonight, what, are they in the process right now where if we chose not to have article, the, the fourth article in there, would it still apply to those ones that are already in the planning stages?
Yes, it would, yes, sir. If you chose not to do, if the board openly said, we're not grandfathering anyone, e- even if you deferred tonight, whenever the changes, if the change is made, it would apply to them. The only, the only way that you get to play by a different set of rules once the law is changed is if you have vested rights. And, and that's a, that's a legal term. Um, and basically it means if you've, you've, you're the beneficiary, I'm going to keep this as short as possible, I swear. If you're the beneficiary of a significant affirmative governmental act, so you've got your site plan approved, or you've got a rezoning approved, then the, the county can't change that. But none of these applicants, to my knowledge, are really anywhere close to getting that approval. They're in the very early stages of, of the application process.
So even too much down, I mean, we, we, we're in a posture now, even too much down the road, we still have time to make changes in this.
Yeah, I mean, and I'll, Mr. Hughes can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I don't think any of them are at a point where they're two months away from an approval. Any of the filed applications that the, the planning department has right now, is that?
Yeah, there's only one that is under a second review, or there are two that are under second review, but only one will be impacted by this, this change, so.
Which one is that?
Well, actually, wouldn't be. The, the Vio case is the closest to being approved, so they're in for their second review, and they had minimal comments on their, you know, first go around. So they are the closest to being approved. The others are, are very early. I mean, I don't think they would be approved in, in two months, just given our review cycle and, you know, comments, because they're, I've yet to ever see a site plan get approval in its first review, so.
I've got one, one thing to add. The one thing I'll add, this is a great question, is the, um, another significant affirmative governmental act is a zoning determination that's, that's unappealable. And I think there's at least one zoning determination that's been issued on a data center saying, you're M1 and you're allowed by right. If, if, and I, I don't know when that was issued, relatively recently, after sixty days and that can't be changed, they can get those protected vested rights under that zoning determination. So I think there's, there's at least one project that, at, at, like, two months from now will, may well have vested rights under that zoning determination.
Commissioners, any further questions? Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. Commissioners, you have any discussion?
Yes, sir. I think there are too many open questions at this particular time for us to just make a car blunch decision. So I would recommend, as a planner, that we defer this at this time.
Motion by Mr. Weber to defer. It's a second by Mr. Williams.
Is, Mr. Weber, is that a deferral to your next meeting this month? Okay.
All right, Mr. Weber in essence states that whereas the general welfare and good zoning practice is warranted, he moves to defer text amendment zero five, twenty twenty-four to the next regular meeting of the planning commission for further discussion. It has been seconded, is there any discussion?
The next meeting is?
Uh, the twenty-fourth of October.
That's what I was thinking, twenty, so defer to the, uh, October twenty-fourth. If, if it passed.
Is that going to give staff enough time? All right, then we will move to our November.
Well, we could, I mean, just to, just for the sake of discussion on this point, we would not have time to advertise anything for that hearing. But if you wanted to take it to that hearing, you could have what effectively would be a first reading of alternative language so that we know what to advertise. Because my, my concern would be, I don't want to have to run multiple advertisements as we tweak the language. So it may, may be helpful to go to that meeting to keep this on track, and at least bring you the draft language at that, that stage.
Staff says that they will be able to assist us with that, so we will defer this to our next meeting on October the twenty-fourth.
And if I could just, now that, you know, now I'm on a roll and I'm at the microphone, I'm just going to start talking all the time. Just to clarify for the public in the record, this is a. Excuse me?
Did they vote?
No, they haven't, and I, and I'm, and this is, this is a deferral of what's been publicly advertised, and you've had your public hearing on. The reason we're discussing the need for another public hearing is that if these changes are substantive enough, we'll need to conduct another public hearing at the planning commission level and at the board level.
I, I do feel that the intent of a text amendment has great merit, and, and I'm all for the intent of it, but it does have some curtilage that needs to be ironed out a little bit. So all those in favor of deferring to our next meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have.
I say nay.
One nay.
One nay, was that, uh, Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Rollins, thank you. We have a division in the House, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Rollins, how say you? For the record, sir.
Do you want to defer?
Yay. The question again?
All right, the motion is to defer until our next meeting, October the twenty-fourth.
Okay, so I voted nay on the.
Deferral.
Deferral.
Yes, sir.
Right.
All right, Mr. Rollins votes nay, Dr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Young? Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Chair votes aye as well. Motion carries five to one. This matter will be deferred to our next meeting, October the twenty-fourth, at six thirty P M.
Okay, board members?
I have a question. So they're not going to hear this until at least November.
Correct.
We won't see it until at least December, and maybe January, in all actuality.
If, if, so at the next meeting, if they, if they want to proceed with alternate language as opposed to what's been heard tonight, then yes, that would then, if, if it's a substantive change, it would need to be advertised.
So, Mr. Hughes, if we get to January, how many projects? Because now, there's no, there, there's no gate.
How many projects, what?
Will, will be already to the point of, there's nothing, that anything we do will inhibit anything or have any control over what they're going to do. How many current projects in your basket right now could get to a point of no return by January? Because it's not two months now, it's four.
You might get one, you might get one with the site plan approval. The rezoning case would come through possibly to the P C by then. But if someone filed an application tomorrow, I, I don't think it's likely that they have a site plan approved by January. Now, someone could certainly, yeah, they could ask for a zoning determination.
So can, or, Mr. McKenzie, is anything we can do to inhibit anything radically changing between now and the time we actually adopt a final ordinance?
Well, anything radically changing, um, I mean, I think that's, you've got the kind of, that universe of applications, so, I mean, I don't, I don't think, I think what Mr. Hughes is saying is that even if you've got a flood of applications for a, a radical change in the amount of data centers, none of those would be to a point where they'd obtain vested rights by January. I mean, that's, we're pretty comfortable saying that.
Could we do a moratorium as of tonight until we get an ordinance?
We can't do a moratorium on applications, no. But, you know, I think there's, there's a handful, and maybe between, like, you know, less than five that are even anywhere in process. And, but that, that process would need to be completed and to, for them to even hit the first stage of obtaining vested rights. And, you know, I promised it'd be short, but it'll be a little longer. Getting an approved site plan, or approved zoning determination, is the first step in a couple of obtaining vested rights that would, that would inhibit your ability to tell them, no, you have to come back for a special exception. They have to then rely on that zoning determination, or, um, or site plan approval and expend significant funds and pursue the project. So if at any point that doesn't happen, no vested rights, subject to whatever change you make. So it's a, it's a, again, a pretty narrow legal lane, that vested rights lane as well. So I, I don't think there's going to be a radical change because there's only a, a handful of projects that could even conceivably reach that point, and then they'd have to tick all the other boxes. But there may well be at lea, you know, a couple that have, have reached that point where they're at least starting on the process of not being subject to the change. If that makes sense.
Well, first we say there probably aren't any, then you say there's probably a couple, so I guess.
No, no, I didn't, I, I, I hope I didn't say there were probably, there's a, there's a, there are, there are, I, I don't know how many, I think somewhere between three and five that have filed site plans or requested a zoning determination. And so what, that's the universe of potential applicants. If you get, if you get applications after this, you know, they're not even starting the process, so they're not going to be ready and approved by January. The fastest turnaround is someone who asks for a zoning determination. Staff has ninety days, I think, to respond, and then sixty days after that, it becomes unappealable. That's when you could get a vested right in that M1 use and a zoning determination. So, that's what we're trying to limit, you know, the universe of potential projects that would be exempted from this change under that vested rights law. And it's pretty small.
But it's not zero.
Correct, yes, sir. And I guess, I'm here, um, the planning commission has deferred. So you cannot take any action without a planning commission recommendation. So the, the, the only motion you could make would be basically to defer pending recommendation from the.
Do we even need to make a motion since we don't have anything?
There's really nothing for you to do.
There's no reason for us to make a motion, I'm not, I wouldn't.
That's fine too.
There's really no action.
That's fine too, yep.
Okay, so, yes.
I would.
I, I do have a comment.
Oh, sorry, um, I was just going to say, whenever you're done, I, I would, my, if the planning commission wants, they can, they can adjourn their meeting and stay or go.
Mr. Chairman? I am really concerned how we handle certain issues. We talk about transparency, and we, we use that word when there are things that we agree with, but it should be done the same way for whether we agree or disagree. We, we sit here and make ourselves look bad because we didn't ask a few simple questions. A few simple questions, I'm sure that legal counsel could have given us advice on, maybe this is not the best way to proceed, maybe this should go the way it's about to go now. And it, it just doesn't, doesn't, does not look good to me. I'll speak for me, it does not look good, nor does it feel good. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, can we, um.
Want to take a break and let the planning commission?
Yeah, oh yeah, the planning commission, yes, we need to, that's a good point. Yeah, take five minutes and let the planning commission, um, sign out. All right, we'll take a five, a five-minute recess, we'll be back around, we'll say nine-minute recess, we'll be back around nine-twenty.
Commissioners, there being no further business, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Young, and I think just about everybody else seconded, that we adjourn until. that we adjourn until our regular meeting on October the 24th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And who heads it up and that type of thing. I know Jeff can dance. I've heard all about it, but. Oh, they did.
So my understanding is the event organizers and I don't. It's usually Cynthia Green and LJ Moyer, I believe. So they make the event known by sending out notice to the all the churches and the nursing homes is what. I spoke with Cynthia Green yesterday and late last week.
We're gonna throw a party for everybody that goes to church at Caroline. Oh, my gosh. Anybody looked at the price of food lately?
The attendance in the past, at least the ones that I have been to, has been abundant but not overwhelming. And that's, to my knowledge, the way they've always done it.
Hey, what do we want to?
Well, have they even got anything to move forward? What did they tell?
Well, they told me that so the last time they had it, which I think was 2019, they spent eleven thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and ten cents. And she said she's not been able to get a quote for the food yet, which is, you know, the biggest expense. Her proposal is to add twenty, twenty percent to what they spent in 2019, and she thinks that that would probably cover it. So a working number there, just rounding up a little bit, would be fourteen thousand dollars. There's in the current budget, eight thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars. So you would need about five thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars from the fund balance to if you wanted to provide the fourteen thousand. And she did say that they could run the event. There was the issue of, you know, we, you need a 501(c)(3) organization that they could run it through Caroline's promise, which I think they've done in the past. So that's about the best information I could get.
I'm gonna get myself in trouble here because I've never been to one of these. But I would like guidelines. I mean, I see, I think it's great to get the people out of the nursing homes and maybe their caregivers or to get someone to be with them, be their date type of thing. I think our seniors who can't get out, that are sort of shut-ins, that don't have a lot of family around, I think that's wonderful. But you're not gonna tell me that a lot of the churches around here don't have their own Christmas parties and their own Christmas dinners. So I don't know. There's, we're growing. We just can't keep inviting everybody. So we need to decide some guidelines. Food is not getting any cheaper. And maybe it will in the future, but I would like to see this gala be for people who really need it, not just. And I don't know, I'm not a judge. I can't decide that. But I, I think we need to have some type of guidelines going into the future as Caroline's growing. I think it's a great idea, but it's, it shouldn't be, you know, it should be for people who really need it. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Thomas?
Go ahead.
I didn't have anything. You, you spoke to Ms. Green.
Yes, sir.
I turned it over to Mr. Barton.
Okay.
I said I turned it over to Mr. Barton after I spoke to Mrs. Green, so they're communicating. I'm, I'm out of it.
So how would we like to?
Well, you can move forward. We still have the rest of this month. We meet in November, there in mid-December.
Yeah, my only concern is it's October and I just know how long it takes to put something like that together. The runway is running out for him. I don't mind moving forward. I'm just saying that.
That's all I'm saying.
That the clock's ticking louder now than it was last month.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. So we have eight thousand, three hundred and.
Forty-eight dollars.
They need twenty percent more?
They need, I would say fourteen thousand. They need twenty percent more than the eleven thousand, six, eleven, ten that they spent in 2019. So that's about fourteen thousand.
Do you have any idea how many people were there?
I, I don't.
Maybe they just need to cut back on the number of people. Yeah, not that long.
Two hundred? I think really, really the, the goal, the goal and intention of this was to kind of give back something to our senior citizens who've been here fifty, sixty years and, and it was a celebration for them.
Fifty and sixty is not that old.
No, I said I've been here fifty and sixty years.
Who determines that? We're growing. I'm just foreseeing the future. We're getting bigger. And who determines which of our, our citizens who have been here for fifty or sixty years? So how do you determine that? And, and then how do you decide which ones you can fit in? I would just like to see the concentration be on people who can't afford to go out, who can't get out. And who's that would be the greatest Christmas present of all to go and have a nice dinner with a, a date or caregiver or whatever and listen to Christmas music and watch Mr. Black dance? That's, and I don't know how they control that, but you can't just keep, as we grow, we can't just keep putting money into a one-day dinner for people that, without some guidelines. That's just my point.
Mr. Underwood?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I can appreciate Mr. Long's position. But this gala has gone on. I know I've attended several. And it's been attended quite well and it's been enjoyed by the members of the communities quite well. And I would love to see us go forward, giving our seniors an opportunity to, to be celebrated on that, on that day. I think it's important. I think these are people who have lived in the county, paved the way. Some of them are really are most forgotten. They're the ones who ha- have been here through our ups and downs. And I think it's just a nice way for us to say, um, to celebrate them on that, that. So I'd like to go forward, Mr. Chairman. If, um, at appropriate time, I'd like to make a motion that we continue to move forward. Jeff, there's no more comment.
There's no more. I'll second his motion that, that we move forward.
All right, I have a motion by, um, Mr. Underwood and second by Mr. Thomas that we may move forward with the senior gala.
Mr. Chair, if we could actually get a supplemental appropriation in the, in the amount of five thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars from the undesignated general fund balance.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend my motion to include a supplemental amount of five thousand, two hundred and.
Six, six hundred and fifty-two.
Six hundred and fifty-two dollars from the general, uh, budget, from general fund.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we will go to the next item on our agenda, which is, uh, non-payment for the water services. This is on one. What's that?
Okay, so, um, me again. So this is something that Mr. Sheble and I have been working on for some time now. And the issue here is that there was a change to the law effective July one relating to the circumstances in which the county can process disconnections for non-payment in water services. And it, and it, the law states in short, among other things, that if the temperature is forecasted by the National Weather Service to be over ninety-two degrees the day after the anticipated disconnection, then, then the county cannot disconnect services. And so the, Mr. Sheble and I have been working together to put together a new disconnection policy that complies with that old law, and we've also done some fine tuning just to improve it while we're working on it. And what you have before you tonight is the result of those efforts. And I guess one other thing to add is the county, under the new law, it needs to have the new policy approved and on file before it can proceed with disconnections. So that is why we're bringing it to you tonight.
Do we need a public hearing to do that, or can we, is this just something we can approve?
Just, yeah, this is just, it's an internal policy, but because we've made some substantive changes and because they were motivated by a change in the law, we're bringing it to you to make sure that you approve and that you're comfortable with it.
Mr. Chair, if the board would like, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the attached Department of Public Utilities Disconnection Policy relating to non-payment for water services. I need for approval.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second.
Discussion?
Discussion, Mr. Thomas.
Just to make sure, Mr. McKenzie, in complying with the law, section four, Article C is basically the one where we're complying with the new state law. Otherwise, it's basically the same. And just, that's where it says seven days. It's ninety-two above. That's.
Yes, that's, and, and they're actually in a number of areas, but yes, that's the key language there. Most, a lot of section four, but particularly Article C. Yes, sir, Mr. Thomas, that's, that's where we say, all right, if we take the, we get the forecast and it's gonna be over ninety-two degrees, here's what happens. You get, do we push it to the next, uh, disconnection to win the.
And at any point in that seven-day rolling window, if it goes above ninety-two again, you can't disconnect.
Yeah, so that, that, that's a great point. That's actually one of the things that took us a while to kind of get fine-tuned is, you know, the, the utilities department, you know, it, it takes a while to get up to the disconnection point, and it can't really turn on a dime. And that's what we were, this law put us in a, it was challenging to adapt internal policies to the new law. So in reality, what will happen is if the forecasted temperature is, is gonna be over the, the ninety-two degrees, those disconnections will probably just be pushed and batched with the next slate of disconnections. And that's why the policy says the next disconnection date.
Okay, thank you. Everybody, what's wrong?
Because our speakers don't work.
Mr. Seale, the vendor is scheduled for next Tuesday, so hopefully that'll be repaired then.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the, on the table. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We are to number seven, uh, the parking and loading requirements, TX zero four, two thousand twenty-four.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. With regards to this text amendment, I believe you all are aware of some correspondence that was received on yesterday from Tri-Corps Incorporated. Staff has had a limited opportunity to discuss this with Fire Chief. And so if the board is in agreement, staff would like an opportunity to have more discussion on this correspondence.
So moved.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
We have a, yeah, all right, all those in favor say aye. So we're through that one. Okay. So, um, next one, we are on to new business. So that is first reading of, uh, zero one, two thousand twenty-four, ordinance to amend the subdivision ordinance of Caroline County by amending section six point three preliminary plaques, Chesapeake Preservation Act. Mr. Hughes?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the board, this is a, an amendment to the subdivision ordinance in response to the corrective action agreement for the Chesapeake ordinance. It simply takes language and puts it in the preliminary plat sections that simply says, it refers back to the zoning ordinance that the, the requirements of the zoning ordinance for the Chesapeake Act. So the DEQ wanted us to add that language, so it was very explicit that the plaques had to have that note on it. So that's what we are doing.
Mr. Chair? How different is this than what we're already doing? What does this add?
It, it only puts the text there. We, the language isn't there, but it was, in their estimation, it was not explicit.
Okay.
So they asked for it to be explicit. So that's all we're doing is sticking it in there. So when you file a plat, your note says you have to refer to the Chesapeake requirements that are in the zoning ordinance. That's, it's, that's simple.
We don't have to read this whole thing again? It's just the two blue lines that are changed?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, how does, uh?
Go to a public hearing?
Yep. I'll take a motion. Motion, motion and second, go to a public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, um, adoption of a resolution declaring the intention of Caroline County to reimburse itself from the proceeds of one or more tax exempt financings.
So moved. So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that passes as well. All right, we are on to number ten. Sheriff Moser, that was a great presentation.
Thank you, sir.
All right, uh, number ten.
But that was you. That was great, Scott.
Informational calendar items. We need to go to another closed meeting, too.
We do?
Yep.
We do?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Right on my face. Um, as we went over after our last meeting, Columbus Day is a holiday, the fourteenth. The nineteenth is Harvest Festival, Saturday, the nineteenth, all day during the day. Frog Level Day Festival is on the twenty-sixth.
Mr. Colly, you missed my meeting. I have a meeting October twenty-fourth.
Oh, yeah. I gotta put that down. Where is that gonna be located again?
Second Mount Zion.
Second Mount Zion. I have it written down on my desk.
Six o'clock.
Mr. Underwood's constituent meeting, Second Mount Zion at six. Election Day is now a holiday. The last couple of years, a state holiday. The VACO Conference starts on the ninth, runs through the twelfth. The eleventh is another holiday, Veterans Day. And then our board meeting is not on Tuesday, but Thursday, the fourteenth. And then, of course, Thanksgiving at the end of the month. Wednesday, most likely, will be a half-a-day holiday. The governor gives that every year for the last thirty, it seems like. So those are the things that we have on the calendar at this time. We do have closed session.
Yep, we need a closed session, Mr. Paul. It's right there.
I mean that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors certify that to the best of each board's members' knowledge that only public business matters lawfully, except for the open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed. Wait a minute, I'm reading the wrong section. You can tell I'm gonna go home.
We're not there quite yet. This, and this, this will be brief. I just need your direction on a couple of things.
Let me try this again. I'm sorry. I mean that this board convened in closed meeting pursuant to the litigation exception of section two point two dash three seven one one A seven of the Code of Virginia for the consultation with the county attorney regarding pending litigation in the Caroline County Circuit Court, where such consultation is an open meeting would adversely affect the litigating posture of the county. And the, and the consultation with the legal counsel and contract exceptions of section two point two, three seven one one A eight and A twenty-nine of the Code of Virginia for the consultation with the county attorney in discussion with staff regarding a revenue sharing agreement for a property located in the Port Roll District and a performance agreement related to a potential VBRS P grant with the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, where discussion of the foregoing agreements in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the county.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? A motion and a second. All those in favor to go to a closed session, say aye.
Aye.
We are in closed session. Have a good night, everybody.
We should have done closing one.
Oh, yeah, we should.
I need a motion to come out of closed session.
So.
Wait a minute.
Gotta read them.
I mean that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors certify that to the best of each board member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully accepted from the open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in closed session to which this certification applies and two that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard discussed or considered by the board.
So I have a motion to have a second. Motion second, all is favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Thomas, do you so certify that everything we went into closed session about was just solely talked about in closed session?
I so certify.
Mrs. Long.
I so certify.
Mr. Seeley.
I so certify.
Mr. Underwood. And I so certify. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Oh, closing board comments?
Oh, closing board, I'm sorry, that's right, closing board comments. Mr. Thomas.
Just one, we didn't respond to citizens who said that we were not at the DEQ meeting and basically that was a DEQ public hearing and not a county public hearing. So I think we should have let folks know that's why we weren't there.
Okay. Mrs. Long.
I agree with Mr. Thomas that that is another miscommunication. We were advised and it was their meeting. I didn't even know it was gonna be here. So yeah, we didn't know.
Mr. Seeley.
I have no other comment other than that wasn't our meeting.
And Mr. Underwood.
Two comments. There was a comment made about me saying that people tell lies. People come to the microphone and tell lies and I'm not gonna say it's anything but a lie. That's what it is. So you don't get the facts, tell the truth, come to the podium and speak your opinion. Your opinion is not a lie, but you giving out facts, quote unquote, trumped facts. That's not a truth. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I have none. So.
Second.
Second. All is favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.